Live jazz there, nice little jazz music there. This meeting is called to order. I am Mayor Beverly H. Burks and this is the City Council Work Session for May 28th, 2024. I'll do the roll call, starting with Vice Mayor Johnson.
Present.
Councilwoman Bell.
Present.
Councilwoman Hood.
Present.
Councilman Perkins.
Present.
And Councilman Carroll. I will also recognize ours interim City Manager Tammy Sadler Jones at this time. There any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, the agenda is accepted by common consent. Item three, which is any member of the public may address questions or comments to the City Council referencing only agenda items after the mayor and council have had the opportunity to discuss the agenda item. Each attendee will be allowed three minutes for comments. We'll move now into presentations, and so are we gonna do A?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll move into A, which is Presentation by Living Walls about the Proposed Mural Project at the North Indian Creek and East Ponte de Leon Underpass in the city of Clarkston. Interim City Manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I'm looking in the audience and seeing, do we have the representative from Living Wall? Have they arrived?
I am online.
Oh, she's virtual.
She's on Zoom, she's on.
Okay, I thought you were gonna be here. Okay, all right, thank you. Melissa, I'm sorry, Monica Campana, did I pronounce your last name right, Monica?
Yes.
She said yes, okay, all right. All right, well, I will turn it over to you, but just to cue it up a little bit, Mayor, the Commissioner Ted Terry had reached out to the city of Clarkston and the mayor's office, along with my office, to organize a meeting about two weeks ago now regarding a art beautification project, and specifically the location at the underpass at East Ponce de Leon and North Indian Creek. And so the county has allocated $75,000 for a arts project. That will include another project over in the Scottsdale area. And so we met with Monica and her team at that location, and so we invited them to come out today to share with you information about Living Walls, what they do, and then also about the proposed project that we are looking at doing with them. So I'll turn it over to you, Monica, thank you.
Okay, thank you all for having us. Before I start, I just wanna make sure that everyone can see this presentation.
We can, and just as a quick reminder, pause, you have 10 minutes for your time, just wanna make sure.
Okay. Okay, perfect. Yes, as it was mentioned, Commissioner Ted Terry reached out to us about two years ago, or three years ago, about this potential project that includes two underpasses. And after seeing the sites and talking about how to access and actually produce this project, we figure out a budget, and just recently, it's been approved, or is almost approved. The, for the ones that don't know about Living Walls, my name is Monica Campana, I'm the Executive Director of the organization, and Living Walls has been around since 2010. We are a public arts nonprofit, we mostly focus on murals, and we work with different institutions, cultural partners, clients, corporate partners. The work that we do at its core is really about bringing representation to the diversity that exists in our communities. We don't only paint walls, but we also train artists in this industry, and we really try to offer opportunities to artists that may not have had the opportunity to paint large scale in the public space. That being said, we are focusing today on the Clarkston Underpass in this intersection of East Ponte de Leon and Indian Creek. As you can see, it has two sides, and we already met on site with all of the, with a few city officials to not just look at the actual walls, but what else we could bring to the space. And if we, I don't know who's managing the presentation, but could we go to the next slide? And this is me. Is there someone that's working the presentation?
Yes, someone is working the presentation. All you have to do is say next slide when you're ready.
Okay, next slide.
Can you see the slides?
I can.
Okay, and if you, you know what, will also help, if you just read the title off the top one, just to make sure we're on the same slide with you.
Okay, perfect. Can we go to the one before?
This is, yeah.
Okay. This is actually a photo from the meeting that we had a few weeks ago, and again, these are the two walls that we are focusing on. We identify issues like the runoff that comes from the bridge, and what we are trying to do is, you know, get some art here. We want to create an application process through a request for proposals. We ideally get an artist that is familiar with the community, that is from the community, that could bring the art to this location. And also, we want to add lights and also gutters. So this is artwork that actually lives longer, and lives longer in a beautiful way. Also, if we do focus on putting lights after or while the art is being produced, it will help with the graffiti issue that we're seeing in this location. Can we please go to the next slide, the one that says Scoop of Work? We have been speaking with, oh, the one before, there, thank you, with Commissioner Ted Terry and his office, and we have figured out the, how we're gonna be dividing the work. And as of right now, we're looking at, you know, hiring an artist to paint directly on the wall, and then to go into lighting in the gutters. We can go to the next slide. There, thank you. We actually just finished a project with Councilmember Liliana Bakhtiari from District Five, from the city of Atlanta, and we just did this at this Arizona and Decap Avenue Underpass, where we hire six female artists of color from the area to paint six different works of art. And then we also put lights, as you can see, this underpass actually was set up to have lights, but with Councilmember Bakhtiari, we were able to change them and put better lights that now are not just making the area safer, in inviting people to be able to see the artwork, not just during the day, but also at night, but it's also helping with the graffiti issue that this location had. Before we painted this, this whole underpass was covered in graffiti. And then we can go to the next slide. This is another underpass that we did a few years ago, it's also off of Decap Avenue. This one already had the lights, we just had to replace a few. And another question that comes to us all the time is, you know, well, aside from the lights, how can we prevent graffiti? And so we do put a coating that will preserve the mural longer, and will be, and will make it easier for us to clean up and maintain the mural, if it were to get tagged, which this one has been there for a few years, and nothing has happened to, to this mural. The other thing that we wanna do for the Clarkston Underpass, once we go through the RFQ process, which we will have to figure out with city officials on how we write this and how long we have it out, but once we figure out the artwork, the other thing we wanna do is put a plaque that will explain what the whole project is about, as a way to, you know, create the respect that the art and the new project, you know, deserves. And that also prevents, we have noticed that when we have a bit, a really big plaque next to the work that we do, explaining who the artist is and what the project is about, and who all was involved in the project, also helps with taggers from, you know, wanting to disrespect the work that's there. We can go to the next slide.
There's no more slides after this example. Example's the last one. So if it's something in particular that you want, as far as referencing, we talked about the lighting, I see the one that kinda sticks out. There's some more examples.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, no, no, we're looking at, I'm looking at some more, we're looking at more examples, just so you know. So the green wall, of course, I'm gonna love that one.
Okay, yes, yes. These are just more samples of the work that we have done. This one, for example, was done with an artist that had never painted this big. So our team was able to train the artist to operate the equipment, do it in a safe way. We train the artist to do this work very large scale, and we also protected the mural with a sealant that has kept the mural looking bright and beautiful. This is from a few years ago as well, I wanna say 2020, or 2021. And this wall, for example, has direct, it gets direct sun, and, you know, sun can, the UV light can fade away paint, but this one is looking, we're trying to do to actually create work that lives for a very long time. So the investment that we're putting into it, and the thought and the intention that we're putting into the process, you know, lasts for a very long time. I believe there's two more examples of the work that we, oh, that's weird, there should have been two more. Oh, yeah. Yeah, this one was done in Beaufort Highway with artist Michelle Ortiz, and this is a project that we worked on with different community groups from Brookhaven and the Beaufort Highway area. We spent about a year of doing community engagement, because that is what the project required us to do. And then this is what was created, who's a participant of the community meetings that we had with the artist. That's also just to show that we still haven't figured out what the RFQ will look like yet, and the requirements for it, but we are very open to hearing what city officials want, and community leaders want to see, so we are able to adapt to what we want to see, specifically now for this Clarkston Underpass. And I think that there was one more before, which was just another example of the work that we do. We are, we have been doing this work for a very long time, our production team is really great, and when it comes down to the actual logistics of producing the mural, this is the, what takes the least amount of time, we are predicting, we're predicting about 15 days to paint the underpass, but what's gonna take longer is gonna be figuring out what that art looks like, and how we can put lights under this underpass, and, you know, how do we address the runoff. So all of those items will probably be a few months before we get to the art portion, and once we have artist's concept, production team set up, you know, the land closures figure out, it should only take about 15 days to produce this mural. Yeah.
Okay.
That's all we have. Do you, any of you have any questions?
Well, thank you again for meeting with, you know, well, we did kind of that quick meeting to get a survey of the land, and at least educating and working and cooperating with our staff to let them know some of the things that we need to be mindful about, and just the fact that you can do it, knowing how difficult it is dealing with CSX. So we really appreciate that. And so we do have an arts council, but I'm gonna let the council ask some questions, you know, in terms of any type of logistics, or what you need in terms of next steps. Or if you just, you know, council, if you have any questions? No? Okay. All right, so.
For next steps, we do have to figure out a meeting with the representatives that you all would like to have in the room, so we can start crafting that request for proposals. I think that having people in, in the community helping us with, with that language is very important. So I think next steps will be a meeting to start working on that RFQ.
Okay, well, guess what? You can also hear what we've been doing with our Greenway project. So you can hear all the wonderful stuff, it's a wonderful transition. So do we have anyone else signed up for this? Not, we'll move into the next one, thank you again. We'll move into our next presentation, which is Item B, and again, listen, and it'll be the presentation by Perkins and Wills, Perkins and Wills, about the Greenway Trail Plan and implementation steps, and I'll turn that over to Mr. Kaiser.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. One minute, and the other 14 minutes will be Perkins and Will. So, the city of Clarkston, small, medium size, whatever how you define the city of Clarkston, very rarely do you have transformational projects such as this one. We've, over the last 10 years, we've had the Streetscape Project, two SPOLOST programs, and we have this project here tonight. It is very transformational, without a doubt. And so, we're gonna, Perkins and Will, the team here, Sarah McCully, as well as we have somebody that won't be speaking here tonight, but she is completely supportive of the project, Kristen Allen, Kristen, we're gonna stand up, Atlanta Regional Commission. So we thank them for being here this evening, supporting the project, and thank you for the funding. So, you have all heard about the pub engagement, we're not gonna go through that, well, we are, in about one minute. What we're here tonight to talk about is phasing, and how the trail segments were analyzed, the criteria, because at the end of the day, we wanna build a project, and we wish we could build all $35 million worth of the project, but we know we can't. So, staff has some recommendations in terms of phasing, and also, those recommendations come from the fact that we need a project that can be a standalone project, because we all know that this is not gonna be built within 10 years, unfortunately, unless we end up with $30 million. Never know, right? You never know. So it's gonna take a while, but we have standalone project that is visible, the public can look at, it can provide connectivity, it has a cost that we can actually build, and we also have some SPOLOST monies, as we know, for Phase One. Phase One meaning the phase, first phase of the project. So, with all that said, Sarah McCully.
Thank you, Larry. Good evening, everyone. We can go to the next, please. So, project team, Perkins and Will, we are leading it. We also have Aditi Subermani in here, who is with Perkins and Will. And then we have Sycamore Consulting, who's been leading our public engagement, Perez Planning and Design, and Trail Connection, who are trail experts, have gotten a lot of trails built throughout the Atlanta region. And then we have Purpose Possible, who has helped us craft a funding plan, so that we can get that 30-some million dollars that Larry was talking about. Next slide, please. So a little bit of site context, you know your city limits, but these are the trail routes we were originally provided at the beginning of the process, that we have since kind of adjusted. But we had three separate options, Option A, mainly along Highway 78, Option B, mainly along 285, and then Option C, which was along the South Fork Peachtree Creek. Next slide. Just a little reminder of how this fits into the planning efforts, ideally, we are looking for adoption of this plan in, later in the summer, and so then it will go under the comprehensive plan, and it can become more city policy to be implemented. Next slide. Project schedule, we started last spring, and now we are in summer of 2024. We are, upcoming public meeting is in mid-June for our final public meeting, and then we'll be writing the rest of the report, getting the executive summary translated, and coming back to you later in the summer for a work session and a council meeting for hopeful adoption. Next slide, please. We can go to the next one. So, overall, engagement has been driving our entire process, we've had a lot of different buckets of engagement. We have our ambassadors, who have been helping us interpret and translate things into 10 languages. We have our project advisory group that we've met with four times over the process, to make sure that we're doing things correctly before we go out to the public. And then we've had our large public events, all of which have been at established community events, so that we're meeting people where they are, rather than asking them to come to us. And then throughout all of this, we've had a storytelling initiative, that we've been filming different members of the community about what they love about Clarkston and Greenways. Next slide, please. These are just some, some photos of that, showing us at the different events. Next slide, please. We've received over 30, or 80, survey responses, and 150 comments between our online and public engagement, or public events. We've had everything duplicated online, and then everything in person. Next slide. Our first bit of it was asking how people get around, and how they'd like to get around, and it was really our goal setting, and I'm going into a little more detail on this, just because the goal setting is how we got to our evaluation. We came to the public with a series of things that they could vote on, and we asked them what was most important to them, and so we use that later in our evaluation process to guide, guide us through that. Next slide, please. And then this is just showing some of our walk-with-us storytelling. We have three 30-second videos on our project website, and we'll have a multi-minute video coming up at our public meeting in June. And, next slide, please. And we can go to the next one. And so, this is, this is the meat of the presentation here. So, as I mentioned, the goal setting, we started out with these six goals, and what we learned from the community was that public health was an overarching goal, both from access to nature, and then also just walking and physical and mental health. And so we've embedded that into our four overall goals, and we also combined parks and green space and access to nature into one. We can go to the next one. So, this is all of them. So our first goal is connectivity, and it's all about bringing people to things they need to go to, not only within Clarkston, but throughout the Atlanta region. So we were thinking about, how do we get people to places that they go to every day here, but how do we get them to a MARTA stop that'll take them elsewhere, or are there future trail connections that we need that can go into adjacent communities? With parks and nature, we wanted to provide access to existing parks, and then look for opportunities for new ones, and then get people closer to nature. So, the creek, for example, you know, it's very inaccessible at the moment, and maybe a trail can provide that. For equity and resilience, we wanted the trail to be for everyone, and we wanted to reach the people that needed it the most for transportation. And then we also wanted to promote, promote public health and environmental stewardship and resilience. And then finally, cost and feasibility, that also embeds community support, the need for acquiring land, or getting easements on properties, and then just the hard cost of getting it built. And then each of those have metrics scored on a scale of one to, zero to five, so zero being the worst, five being the best. And we'll go to the next one. And you can see here, these are all of the metrics we, we measured everything on. So, each of them have between four and eight individual things that we looked at, and then scored all together to, to get the final score. Next slide, please. So, once we did that, and we got our initial score, we came to the project advisory group and the public to show them the initial route, and we had public events in February where we did that, and then we rescored everything based on that public feedback. So the route we'll show you tonight is based on that public feedback and additional site visits to double-check things from what we heard during that feedback. We can go to the next one. So these are the individual segments we originally started with. If there were potential alternatives for them, we would score both the original segment we were given and the alternative, to see which one would come out better. The little black marks note where we broke up the segments into, so that we could create a connected route. Next slide, please. And then this is how they scored originally. Green is good, red is bad, and then the orange and yellow in the middle are, you know, average. And so, from that, we can go to the next slide. We ended up with this route after we rescored everything, and went out to visit the sites. So you can see that the line slightly changed here because of site conditions, and different ways we needed to get into different apartment complexes, and all of that. So, we ended up with a combination of all of the original options that we were given. One thing to note here is that we originally had a segment on Montreal Road. We are now acknowledging it, but knowing that the road diet project is happening, we figure we'll make recommendations, but then that project will handle that segment of a potential trail. But then, all of the other ones come off of Montreal Road in that area. We can go to the next one. So for our phasing, Phase One, ideally, we wanna create a model mile that can be used, and gets people somewhere they need to go, and isn't just somewhere back, behind somewhere that isn't accessible from a major street, or a park, or something. And then the Phases Two and Three, we have the Central Greenway Trail Routes that connect more residents and businesses, and then Phases Four on, expand the Greenway to other routes that maybe aren't as high priority, or that go to other communities. The city is actively pursuing grants for design and engineering of the first three phases. The SPOLOST has Phase One, and then the Congressional District spending for the additional two phases. We can go to the next one. So Phase One, this is what we're hoping you can give us some feedback on. We have Segment C6 here, which is Montreal Road to Wild Circle Road. It's roughly 3/4 of a mile, and it connects into the Friendship Forest Trail. So ideally, people who live in those apartment communities could go into Friendship Forest, but then they can also access Montreal Road from that route, and then also down to Ponce through Friendship Forest. Between all of the planning, engineering, contingency, construction costs, this segment is looking at $2.8 million. We can go to the next one. Phase Two is Segments C7 and C8. This one's a little longer, just because we wanted to make sure we were getting people to where they need to go. So this is picking up where C6 left off, behind the apartment communities, and then going all the way across Rocket Road into the apartment communities behind Rocket Road. This one, with all of those things together, is about $7 million. The numbers are incorrect on this slide, right above the total, but the total's correct. And it's a little bit longer, so it could, it could take more, more work. Next slide, please. And then Phase Three picks up from Montreal Road and goes to Casa Woods Lane and to Thrift Town, and there's a few little spurs in here. And then this one also assumes that ideally, some of the road. And then this one also assumes that ideally, some of the road diet project could either be in design or construction at this time, so that those connections along Montreal Road are also safer. There's also, because of Montreal Road being a really busy street, we're looking at a safer crossing where the trail needs to cross the road. Next slide, please. And then phase four, this is just getting people on the northwestern edge of the city into the trail network. This one runs through potential apartment easements generally along the highway and connects into the segment that goes into Casa Woods Lane. And this is about a mile. We can go to the next one. And then this, phase five, just connects the remainder of what was in phase four down to Ponce and over to Mel Avenue. Next one, please. So all of those phases I just showed you are about 4.6 miles, but everything we showed you on the original map is about 6.2. So if we go to the next slide, you'll see the difference here. When we add in some of the segments along Highway 78 and connecting on Montreal Road behind Georgia Piedmont Technical College, we get the other 1.2 miles. And again, these and phases four and five are lower priority than the one that kind of runs central through the city. Oh, and I'm sorry, this one also includes connections to Tucker and Scottsdale and across the railroad tracks or under the railroad tracks. And next slide, please. So we've also been thinking about safety, making it a positive place to be through this and parks and other things that people would want to see along the trail. So all of our costs kind of consider just a rough order of magnitude for those and general, you know, along the linear length of the trail. So we're looking at security gates near apartment complexes that maybe have a PIN code that allow residents to go out to the trail and get back in, fencing along apartment complexes if we are able to get the easements to put the trail in, security cameras at trail entrances, trash cans at key places, and then lighting from dusk till 11 p.m. so that people's usage of the trail, particularly in the winter months, isn't reduced when it gets dark. Next slide, please. And then we've also been thinking about wayfinding and placemaking from signage that is static and maybe just has information, general wayfinding mileage, this is the trail you're on, that kind of thing, to stuff that is more digital and you can change things there. And then community gardens and seating and parks and public art along the trail. Next slide. And next one. This is just telling us where we're going, which I already went through, but we'll be finished this summer with the rest of the study.
Okay.
Any questions?
Great job. We want to thank you again for how much community involvement that you've been having, and we really appreciate all the effort that you're making to ensure that our residents are participating and we are doing that connection with the path. So thank you again for the entire team. I keep up with all the news that you have and love when I see your LinkedIn posts and everything about that. But at the end of the day, you are trying to create community, right? And so community that can walk, live, enjoy nature, but be able to utilize these paths. So thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Counsel, do you have any other comments or questions? Do we have anyone signed up for this? We'll look forward to seeing you at Juneteenth and then in the future in terms of the summer for next steps and moving forward. Thank you again for all the hard work.
All right, thank you.
Okay, take care. So we'll go into old business now, which is to 5A to consider for approval ordinance number 494 to amend the charter, city charter to authorize city manager to purchase certain goods and services and to enter into certain contracts on behalf of the city. At this time, I'll have interim city manager Jones to address this.
Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, this is an old business item that has been addressed at a previous work session, also at the most recent council meeting. It requires two readings because it is an amendment to the charter to allow the city manager position that currently has zero, and I repeat, zero spending authority, to have a spending authority of $25,000, and staff does recommend approval.
Okay, and this is one of the items that we have to keep as is. If we make any changes to it, we have to start the entire process over again with having two council meetings to approve it. I just wanted to make note of that piece of it. Counsel, do we have any other comments at this time for this particular item? Hearing none. Do we have anyone from the public signed up for this item? Okay, with that being said, is this something you would like for consent? Consent all? Yes, okay, so we'll mark 5A as consent. Thank you all. We'll move to the next one, which is 5B to consider for approval ordinance number 5495 to amend the chapter, chapter two of the city code regarding administration to delegate to the city manager the authority to purchase goods and services and to enter into contracts on behalf of the city, subject to certain conditions and limitations. Interim city manager Jones.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This item is closely related to the amended charter recommendations. The proposed ordinance would allow the city manager to make purchases and enter into contracts in an amount not to exceed $25,000. The ordinance provides several checks and balances for fiscal responsibility and public transparency. As I mentioned earlier, the city manager has zero spending authority, and this would allow the city manager to have an amount not to exceed $25,000.
Okay. With this particular item, Counsel, we've talked about it at previous meetings. Is there any further discussion on this item? Okay, is this item an item for consent? Okay, so we'll also mark 5B as a consent agenda item. We'll move on to 5C, which is to consider overriding the mayor's veto of the approval of the lease agreement with G and I X Industrial GA LLC for the lease of approximately 27,510 square feet of office space at the property known as 736 Park North for use as city administrative space for a term of 62 months. And again, we already talked about this at our special call meeting, and I know that we were going to get some additional information for this and other items, but we'll have that ready for the next council meeting. Is that correct? Okay, given that, is there any further discussion on this item? Nope. Okay. And is there anyone signed up from the public? All right. So with that being said, we won't put this one on consent because we were looking to have additional conversation. We'll move on to the next item, which is related to C, which is item D, and that is to consider overriding the mayor's veto of the approval of the contract with Parani Construction, Inc., a Georgia statewide contract number 99999SPD5202009010020, and the Gordian Construction Contract Number GA A07040820PAR, under the Sourcewell Contract Number for the design work to renovate some areas within the building located at 736 Park North for use as administrative space for a term of six months in the amount not to exceed $108,000. I'll turn this one over to the city manager as we have representation to provide any additional information.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, from previous conversations, it was requested that I provide some additional options concerning changes in the proposed location. We do have a representative from Pariani Construction. It's actually Bhavik Pariani. You can go to the podium, please, Mr. Pariani. And I wanted him to share with you some of the steps that we would need to go through and some of the things about his company in regards to our proposed renovations due to specifically security measures that we would like to do in the proposed new location. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Bhavik. I'm with Pariani Construction, and the purpose for my being here today is to educate you all on the design process and some of the ins and outs of how to make this a reality, if it's something that you guys see that you need. My understanding is that the new location, the 26, 27,000 square feet or so, we'll consolidate this as well as another building across the street for all the city staff to occupy as well as the police department for their evidence storage, along with a few other critical components of the city's structure. The design portion of the contract itself obviously is pending the lease being executed, but like I said, I'm just here to educate and answer questions on the design process itself. So essentially, if this design contract were to be executed, the process that would take place would be that you guys, as a city and all of the stakeholders who would be occupying the new space, would sit down with members from my team, an architectural team, and an engineering team over the course of six to eight weeks to develop a set of construction documents that would fit your guys' exact needs, space use, programming, and security needs. All of those items would be addressed during that proposed time period. And I just want to make a quick correction. I believe that the introduction said six months. The design process would take about six weeks, so not six months. So essentially, what I have pulled up here is another project that has been executed under the same contract type. And it starts from very, very early on, which is literally like a napkin sketch. So we would sit down with all of the stakeholders and go through and say, hey, you know, we have X amount of offices needed for admin staff, we have X amount of offices need for support staff, this is the public area that's needed. And then based on those requirements, we would develop a very rough sketch of what the space would look like. If there needed to be a council chambers, if there needed to be a judicial aspect of it, any type of requirements like that, it would be a back-of-the-napkin sketch initially. We would develop that further, come back to you with a more refined, more refined plan. And you can see here, this is a sketch plan, how it initially would start off. This was for a fire station, something different, but essentially the same thing. You guys would get a space plan and a program. We would have a meeting on that. The meeting notes would come back to us. We would develop that further. If you can go to the next slide, that would be a more defined floor plan. And I think one of the things that is a big nebulous for construction is that a lot of people get nervous about the cost spiraling, and there's all these additional things that are unforeseen. So part of the design process is actually very important to have the builder involved in that process to make sure that budget overruns don't happen and that the things that are being drawn are reasonable and actually be able to be built the way that they're drawn. And so, you know, our team specifically on the construction side would be to ensure that any requested design features that the city may have during the design process can be implemented in an intelligent and cost-effective way. And we also have the ability to do what we call constructability reviews and cost projections, so ensuring that budgets are being met. And that's part of the cohesive design process that was proposed in the submitted proposal. So this is again, an early space plan. This was for a ground-up building, so it was much more involved. And the space that you guys are looking at is an existing structure, and all of the existing drawings are there already, so it'd be very, very easy and much quicker to modify. It's a relatively simple interior renovation, and so again, a lot of the complexity's gone from that. But I think that the main takeaway for you all, and I'm happy to answer questions about this, but is the design process itself needs to be collaborative, where we are not, we're not the end user, we're not the people who are going to occupy the space from nine to five every day. So we don't need to have a say in what it looks like or how it goes together. We're only here to offer technical expertise and construction-related expertise, engineering expertise in those items to develop a plan that works for you guys. So the design process, the six to eight weeks itself, would be a handful of meetings, Zoom calls, meeting minutes back and forth. We would develop the final plan based on your needs. And then at that time, when that plan is complete, you would have a full set of construction documents that you could go to permitting with, fire life safety, fire marshal approval, all that good stuff, along with a concrete budget of what it would actually cost to the penny. And then at that point, you guys would be able to make the decision, you know, that's y'all's prerogative to do what you see fit, but to proceed with the construction, to not proceed with the construction, whatever maybe needed at that point. Yeah, so that's the general gist of it. If there's any specific questions or anything I need to touch on that you guys are interested in hearing more about, I'd be happy to help.
Okay, and thank you for coming. Did anyone want to have asked questions? Yes, Councilwoman Hood?
Yes, thank you. That was a very good presentation. Can you repeat for me what plans we will receive at the end in addition to a pretty firm budget?
Yes, ma'am. So at the end of the project, you'll receive what is called a 100% construction document set. And that would be, and I might have said CDs there, which is just a shortened version of construction documents, I apologize, but a construction document set would just be your blueprints. You've seen them in a movie, I'm sure, big full rolled drawings, you know, 30 pages, engineering requirements, specifications, the technical documents that we would use to build your space.
Okay. And then my second question is, I understand that staff, et cetera, will be meeting with you and expressing their desires for the space. And you noted that you are not the end users. But I'm hoping that as this process evolves and people, staff, et cetera, police, let you know what it is they need, that based on your firm's expertise, that you could find ways to accommodate those needs in the least expensive way. And as a, for instance, this is something that's come up before, there's the proposal that the front door of this building be moved, and that may in fact be required. But as your company is going through this process, would you be able to look at things and say, you know, there's a way that your needs can be accommodated in a less expensive way?
Yes, ma'am. So the process you just described is called value engineering, or VE is what we call it in the industry. We have extensive experience with value engineering and in the design-build process, which is what this process would be, the value engineering would be a critical component in that six to eight week period. And a lot of times, what is very beneficial, and I understand in this specific scenario, it may not be reasonable, but if a budget is determined initially and saying, hey, this is how much we would like to spend on construction, what we can then do is take that top-line number. And then as the design progress is continuing from page to page, if, you know, somebody from PD or somebody else wants to say, hey, maybe we can have beautiful crown molding, we can say, hey, guys, let's reel that back, may not be necessary, we got to hit this budget, which is a critical item. And when it comes to things like the door being moved or ADA compliance, some of those items are going to be required by law. But the things that are not required by law or the things that we can do in a roundabout way, we can definitely do that. And part of that is having an open dialogue with the fire department, the building and planning permit department, as well as the engineers and architects. So that's a comprehensive portion of that planning process. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other questions? Hearing none, this item, thank you again for coming and providing the information. So this item too will go on the agenda for our council meeting. And we'll move on to item E, which is to consider overriding the mayor's veto of the approval of the contract with Southern Computer Warehouse, Inc., SCW, Inc., a Georgia statewide contract number 99999-dash SD0000172-0114. contract number 99999-SD0000172-011014, to provide a security system for the proposed new, for the new proposed city administrative space located at 736 Park North for a term of six months in the amount not to exceed $126,000. Again, this was discussed at the special call meeting, and unless there's any further discussion on this, we can also move this item to the agenda for the council meeting as well. Not as, not as a consent, just a regular, okay? No one else signed up, just wanted to make sure. All right, perfect. Okay. Thank you, council, and thank you again and all. We'll move on to new business, which would be 6A, to discuss a resolution authorizing the staff and professionals to proceed with insurance of general obligation sales tax bonds. Mr. Deffna?
Yes, Madam Mayor and council members. This agenda is basically just a resolution for the professionals. Davenport and Company are here, our bond attorney, our city attorney, and myself, and interim city manager, to move forward with planning for a SPOSS bond. We have two different options of whether to go with a bank loan or public financing, which could get us a much cheaper interest rate in the long run, but has some upfront additional costs associated with that. So we'll be studying and reviewing those to come back with a financing plan to present to you. So this is just a resolution to move forward with that proposal.
Okay, outstanding. This is something that we did in terms of that evaluation and that process with SPOSS 1.
Yes.
Yes.
We didn't do this in SPOSS 1. We just went with a regular bank. All the financing we've done has been just a flat bank loan.
Okay.
We haven't done the public offering aspect before.
Okay.
But as we've grown, that's become a more feasible option.
Okay, excellent. And I'm glad that you're evaluating different options for the city. At this time, council, do you have any comments or questions? Hearing none, and thank you for our wonderful finance team over there for coming. Davenport, we appreciate you guys, and we're looking forward to moving forward with this item. Council, do we have anyone signed up? Nope. So would you like to have this as consent? Consent? Consent, outstanding. So item 6A is consent. Thank you very much, and thank you for showing up, just in case we had questions. We appreciate that. We'll move on to item 6B, which is to discuss the selection of the contractor, Construction 57, Inc., to reconstruct the existing asphalt driveway apron located at 1056 Vaughn Street in the amount of $9,850 to be funded out of SPOSS 1. And Mr. Kaiser?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council. This project has a little history to it, and I don't think you want me to spend 20 minutes going through that history. I try to lay that out on the agenda as best I can. And so, at the end of the day, what we're trying to achieve is to have the existing garbage dumpsters relocated to the North Indian Creek side of Clarkson Plaza, which is going to be funded entirely by Ms. Tran, who is the owner of Clarkson Plaza. She'll fund the new slab, she'll fund the fencing enclosure, she'll fund the permitting cost, et cetera. So in the process of the last three years of garbage being picked up from those dumpsters on Vaughn Street, which is the, what is that, the south side of Clarkson Plaza, along the side of the street, during that process, the cab sanitation, wastewater, waste management, they had a side-loading dumpster, a truck, sanitation truck, that they used to unload the dumpsters on Vaughn Street. Well, that was fine and dandy, because they didn't have to go into anybody's driveway and back into it. The last, I don't know the exact date, maybe the last 12 months, last 18 months or so, it's been, it's been some period of time where the type of truck that was used was more of a front-loading dumpster, front-loading sanitation truck. So when that happened, that truck had to back into the driveway at 1056 Vaughn Street, Pastor Adams driveway, which is the church, I forget the name of the church that's there. And so, in that process, his driveway apron within city right-of-way was damaged. And so what we did was, I solicited a number of requests for a quote from four different contractors. I laid out the specifications very clearly to all four of them. Two contractors responded. I also prepared an opinion of construction cost of $9,010, based upon recent unit prices that I've seen with all my clients over the last 12 months. The low bid was $9,850, I believe. And so, that contractor we have utilized before, that driveway apron within city right-of-way of Vaughn Street will be concrete with reinforcing steel, because we have no idea how long it's going to take Ms. Tran to move those dumpsters. We have talked to her, I have provided guidance to her, we have told her that she needs to move ASAP with removing those dumpsters. But until she does that, we have to build an apron that can withstand garbage trucks running on top of it. And this driveway does that. This is a driveway type that we have built on all of our street skates project, on commercial driveways. This is the same kind of design, made the same materials, and so it will withstand a garbage truck running back onto it and back onto the road. I'm not concerned about the deterioration of that driveway with a period of even two to three years. It's going to hold up with no problem. But the issue is, we need to get Ms. Tran moving to move that dumpster. And so, I have offered a number of engineering firms, small firms, that can help her get quotes from them to help her permit this new dumpster pad relocation. She hasn't acted on it yet, and so we need to, maybe Ms. Jones and I can talk about how we can help her expedite the process to get her moving. But this project will stand the test of time, even if it does take more than a year for her to relocate those dumpsters. That's the story.
Okay, thank you so much. And I know right now, we're looking at just this amount, and so I know that in collaboration with the staff, it's because we do have code, you know, and so let's leverage what we have to ensure that we move forward with this project. Okay, right? And my only concern is that, because I've seen how waste management goes all the way up, not just where the apron is. And so, that's my bigger concern, is that while I want to make sure that from a council perspective, we move forward with this, I want to make sure we think about timing of it as well, because that's a very critical factor. So that is separate. We just deal with the money part, but I want to make sure that the staff and everyone is making sure that there is a collaboration in terms of the effort, so that we don't put this there. And then the church still has to deal with waste management going up their personal area, too. So that's my bigger concern. So I know everyone's going to work together, right? Right. But tonight, we're going to pay for the construction of it, okay? All right, council, do we have any comments? Yes, Councilwoman Hood?
Mr. Kaiser, is all of this work that is related to this item, is it all on public right-of-way?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so we've gotten that piece out of the, in terms of it is all on public right-of-way. Count, did we have anyone signed up for this item?
No, ma'am, nobody's signed up for anything.
All right, okay, thank you. So do you would like to have this as consent? Is this filed for everyone?
Yes.
Consent? Go ahead and ask Councilwoman Bell.
Well, as y'all know, I got a question. So, Mr. Kaiser, so this, this write-up has Mr. Gomez's name in it, right? So that tells me that we've been going through this for quite some time. It also tells me, based off what you just disclosed, that Ms. Tran has not moved forward with the procurement firm for the design and permit of the work. And so that has been, what, over two years? My estimate, estimations are correct?
Actually, it's been about one year, about one year. When we noticed, when we were contacted, and the mayor was contacted, Pastor Adams, about damage to his driveway, we didn't know there was damage until it was brought to our attention. And so then we come to find out, the change in type of trucks that were being used, it's been about 12 months, 10 to 12 months in that range.
So this is less about us having to pay for this. I know why we're paying for it, because it's in public right-of-way. However, this still doesn't address the issue with the relocation of the two dumpsters that led to the incident as a whole. And what I don't want is to pay for this, and we still don't have any cooperation from Ms. Tran, and this happens again, and then this is seen back into this agenda package. So somebody needs to let, you know, what we're going to do as a solution for this, because us paying for it is not a solution as of right now.
Right. And that's why I was saying, Ms. Cameron is going to come up, because this is something from a code. So just so you also know, Councilwoman Bell, as Mr. Kaiser mentioned, this was a side-loading. And then, you know, it was brought up previously that there was an issue with it. And so I had to push about this and even do videotape. I just so randomly happened to have the videotape of the dumpster going up the church's driveway, right? And so, all of this part in terms of them actually getting Ms. Tran to do and move it is a recent occurrence. And so that's why I want to make sure in terms of everyone talking, right? Because what I'm, what I'm not hearing is, we're not all talking to ensure for both individuals that this is a plan.
Right.
In terms of what the current location and moving that location, and making sure that the owner understands the need to do it.
Right.
From a code perspective, which that is your arena. Take it away.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor and city council members. I have not had the pleasure of talking with the property owner. We've had a couple of situations where we are asking or requiring businesses to come up to code regarding their dumpsters. So the, it's not, really it's not an issue as to the time it would take, it's just a matter of meeting with that business owner, getting a survey like we, you know, like the code requires, and then providing that information so that they can tell us when they're going to start. So I'm sure that I'll be meeting with the city manager, I'll be meeting with that business owner, so that we can talk about, you know, the next step and getting that taken care of. But I haven't, I've heard about the situation, but I have not been a part of that. But we will move forward in getting that taken care of.
And so, thank you for that. But that is something collectively.
Yes, yes.
That as of this meeting, I don't want to hear anymore. So I want to make sure that when we, we're all a team, right? So let's all work together, right? Because, you know, this is something where we can make sure both the owner and the church, we're all on the same page. So I appreciate the contract and making sure we do that, but I also need the enforcement. And so, Councilwoman Bell, did you have anything else?
I mean, as a collective, that means that we should know about this beforehand, because maybe one of us can help move this along a lot faster. So I didn't know about this until today. So that is not your fault or your fault. But that should, when y'all got the information, whatever it is, we may be able to help them, because it has to be a challenge, just to watch she hasn't still moved those two dumpsters at this point. And so, I think it would be helpful if we worked on this as a larger collective in order to stop this, because I don't want to continue to pay for stuff that, or come out of the city's funds from residents, and we still don't have a real good solution for how to stop this long-term, not just as a one-off. So that's my biggest issue and concern for these type of matters, because I didn't know.
Well, yeah. I think that was in your report, right? That you talked about these things.
Well, this was an issue before I even got here. It was an issue after I got here, which is how I got involved. So there was history about this particular issue before I arrived in September. So I don't know why you weren't aware of it, but it's been an issue a long time.
If I may, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I have actually attended meetings with both owners. And Ms. Tran, is it Tran? She is very cooperative. They have tried to, to, to rectify the situation, but it was the type of truck that was being used. Nobody told her where she could put the other dump, the dumpster, other than where it was. So what happened is, we had a project, and we moved her dumpster from one side of that building to the other, whose idea it was, I think it was best at that time, and the problem started. But if the trash had not have started, the church would not have complained. If they had not have asphalted their driveway four times in one year, they would not have gone to Mr. Gomez. So it was the repeat trash, the truck, the damage that they, but when they did come together, they asked me to sit in with them and the former city manager, and they tried. So what Mr. Kaiser has came up with today is the resolution, because they worked together to try to fix the problem, because the church was just going to put up a gate. So for her to do anything, and they're very cooperative people, because they own the whole plaza. So I don't think she'll sleep on this for a year, because she was very understanding that she was damaging private property.
Yep.
So.
Okay.
So, but it's been a year, right? The trash cans are not moved, and they've just been going back and forth in negotiations around moving these trash cans, but still not addressing the truck and how it's turned around in there, which led to the damage.
Well, there's no addressing the truck, because that's the way the bin is made. You have to stick the forks in the side and lift the truck.
All right, Mr. Kaiser.
I think the issue is, there's a language issue with Helen Tran.
Okay, so that's the issue.
So that's part of it.
Because y'all keep saying that it's a solution.
So we have met with her at least three times, at least two times, maybe three times, with Ms. Tran. She understands, but then she would say, Mr. Kaiser, can you help me? I said, well, here's what I can do, Ms. Tran. I can give you names of small firms that might have an interest in doing this. Try to expedite it, right? Try to give her some assistance and help with this. And then every time I do that, she sends an email back two weeks later, and she says, well, this company doesn't want to do it, this company doesn't want to do it. I said, you know, the end of the day, Ms. Tran, and these are all in emails, it's your problem to solve. We identified the location on site with you. We told you where it needs to be put, you agreed to it, and here is what needs to be done. We can only do so much to help her. And so she needs to act on something. I mean, she has some names, she can go to the phone books, she can go to the internet, she can do whatever she needs to do, but we have given her, we gave her a lot of guidance in terms of size, location, names of firms, emails, phone numbers, et cetera, et cetera. So what more can we do?
Well, we're going to work.
Yeah, right.
And you're going to come back, make sure we have a solution for it. Okay? Yes?
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Mr. Kaiser, do you know if anybody has, Ms. Tran would have been the person to do it, to find out from DeKalb if the previous kind of truck should service that? Has anybody contacted DeKalb?
So I think Rodney made contact with DeKalb back late last year, early this year, before he left, and he never received a response back from DeKalb County.
I'm sorry, they respond?
I said they never received a response.
Oh, they never received a response?
No.
Well, I would think that that would be one alternative Ms. Tran to pursue. And also, I think it would be important, I mean, keep this problem from getting worse. We're going to, you know, replace the apron on the property that we're responsible for, but if, and it's kind of not our problem that the church property is getting damaged. But at some point, you know, it's just going to get worse if something isn't done. And I think this, this is sort of not exactly kicking the can down the road, but because we've got a plan for our property, but if she doesn't really understand what is happening and what the cost is going to be and all of this, I think we're, we're only, we're only solving part of the problem.
I believe she completely understands.
Yeah.
There's no doubt. I think it's a matter of her... I think it's a matter of her initiating it and getting it moving and finding the company. And it's been, how long has it been? Maybe two months now at least since I sent that first email, met with her onsite. So, it's been two months since I met with her onsite and showed her, "Here's the location, here's what you need to do," and, and gave her all that information. And I met with her again after that and sent her three or four emails. So, I think we've done our due diligence, a matter of code enforcement going to the next step.
But is, is the church communicating with her and?
They don't need to. It's not their, it's not the church's responsibility.
No, Coach.
No.
Okay. Okay. Councilman Perkins.
Actually, Mr. Kaiser, sorry. I had a quick question, um, just a timing question since this, I believe this is connected to SPOST One funding. Did I miss?
Uh, no, this is not.
Okay, so there's not, there's not an external.
No.
Timeline in terms of we have funding that we're not gonna be able to use. Okay. Um, do we have a, just want to make sure, or a couple of different things. Do we have a, like a contract with her where she's agreeing to make these changes? Or we're just approaching it from, we're approaching it from code enforcement?
Code enforcement.
Okay. And has she been given a clear timeline in terms of?
Think of my last email, which was like two weeks ago, said that by, I think I put it, I gotta look at my email. I think I said by the end of June, we need to have something to get to planning in terms of a permit, plans. And that's what I believe I have in my email.
Okay.
Of course, she's not gonna, I mean, she's not gonna respond to my email unless it comes from a higher source.
Okay. We got you.
Got you.
Okay. All right, everyone. Thank you. Any other questions or comments at this time? Okay. Uh, is everyone fine with this item in terms of the amount?
Yes, ma'am.
And for consent?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, no?
Yeah. I needed to chew on a little bit more, I think.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
He needs to chew one in a little bit more. So, just for everyone who is either watching or in the audience, um, what you've seen is that we, if we're all in agreeance on a particular item, and there's no further deliberation, then we put it on consent. And if a councilperson has, uh, the need for further information or whatever, then we allow that particular item to go on the regular agenda for further discussion at the actual council meeting. This is the work session. And so, we move things to the council meeting. And so, that gives people the opportunity, a council member, um, if they need additional information or whatever, to be able to take care of that at that time. So, we'll keep item B on the regular agenda. We'll move on to item, um, C, which is to discuss approval of an agreement with the Atlanta United Football Club to utilize Mylon Park's upper fields to hold eight free soccer clinics for the youth committee of Clarkston at no cost to the city. And we'll have our new parks person, Mr. Michael, come on board.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, we were approached by United, um, Atlanta United Football Club to hold, um, eight free soccer clinics for our youth at Mylon Park. And they received a grant, and so they chose us as a location. And we feel it will be benefit for us as we starting to build programs, and I think soccer is probably gonna be one of our biggest programs. So, this would be a good partnership to have them come aboard from September 21st to November 9th. And they will run those clinics at Mylon Park. And so, I, I believe this would be a good program for us to have.
Outstanding. And I'm not mistaken, didn't we do this before?
Yeah, they, they.
Okay, that's why I just wanted to make sure. Okay.
Same program made it last year.
Yeah, basically the same program, yes.
And when we did it last year, did we have them, or we did something to, in terms of the equipment or something else with the?
Yeah, they, they provide, because they, they received the grant, so they provide.
Okay, all right, all right. I just wanted to make sure we were covered with that piece. Okay, outstanding. So, we're gonna, we have our new communications person, and we're gonna do a lot of promoting of it, right? Okay. Outstanding. Councilwoman Bell.
So, thank you for being here tonight. Michael.
Yes.
Right? Um, so, I know we did this last year and the year before, but now that we have you on board, it'd be great to see this being a continuation, an annual thing, where it don't have to come to us, but maybe we get a three or four-year agreement for them to use that space. Maybe thinking about larger program, what that means as far as the city, promotion of other programs and getting them to go here.
Well, we're also, as a city, gonna also provide some clinics as well. So, we, we're partnering with them this year, but we're looking to also plan our own clinics as well moving forward.
Outstanding. Mr. Perkins, Councilman Perkins.
Um, yeah, again, thank you. This is a phenomenal program. Have you guys approached, I know there's other clinics and, and programs that are operating within the city of Clarkston as well? There's other nonprofits to do soccer clinics. Have you guys been able to connect with them or have any conversations?
Well, I've, I've had some conversations. So, when, when this came about, I was looking to do something during the summer. So, we are gonna be working with outside organizations as well, but it's something that this year I felt that it would be perfect for us to partner with them as we start to build, because we're looking to have a soccer program starting in the spring. So, I think this will help us jumpstart that program. So, we would definitely be working with other, um, organizations as well.
Okay, that's great. That was, that was gonna be my only recommendation. If you weren't already doing it, it sounds like you are, and I'm happy to help connect any way I can. So, thank you so much for your work on this.
Outstanding. And Arthur Blanks already funding some stuff that's here, so.
Right.
That's another way we can leverage it in terms of long-term grant, um, with them for, for the program as well, too. Uh, any other questions? Councilwoman Hood?
Thank you.
Yes, welcome, Michael. Um, so glad you're here. Uh, this venue agreement says owner shall provide the additional services set forth in, on Exhibit B. And I didn't see an Exhibit B, just an Exhibit A.
You talking about on the contract?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you just check on that?
Yeah, I would definitely check on that.
For Councilwoman, thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions? Yes, council, I mean, yes, city manager.
Yeah, Mayor, I did want to also add that, um, Atlanta United will be giving the city a thousand dollars towards the use of the venue, so at least we'll have something to help with some maintenance and other things that we may have to do.
Well, we're gonna ask them for the amount we got last time, right?
Yes, but we are gonna.
Well, we did. Um, I did approach them, because I think the last time they paid thirteen fifty, and so, um, I talked to him, and he said he's gonna go back and look at that. So, that might be a change on the contract as well to thirteen fifty.
Okay. Outstanding. Yes. Councilwoman Bell.
Um, city ma- uh, no, wrong person. City Attorney Quinn, have you seen this full venue agreement? You seen both Exhibit A and Exhibit B in regards to this one?
Um, that's a good question. I was just trying to review that for myself when I heard, when I heard, uh, Councilmember Hood's comment. I definitely remember reviewing the contract and finding it to be acceptable. Um, I'll just have to look a little deeper and see if that Exhibit B is just a misplaced reference or what's going on there.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I think that's it, and we're looking forward to some wonderful soccer.
Oh, definitely.
Okay, thank you. Um, in lieu of the Exhibit B, did you still want to have this as consent, or how do you, how would you like to deal with that?
Consent.
Consent? 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 And if it's, if it's something that we need to remove, we can always take it off consent. Okay? All right. So, that will also go on to consent, which is item six C. We'll move on to item D, which is to discuss approval of an agreement for services between the city of Clarkston and BidNet Direct as the online bid solic- solicitation host website at no cost to the city. I'll, I'll tee it off to interim city manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, as you mentioned, this is strictly for, um, our online bid solicitation. Uh, we haven't done this before. We always solicit through the state portal, uh, but this will actually widen our net as far as, um, bids and, and RFQs and invitations to bid, uh, process. Uh, but I do want to turn it over to our consultant, our purchasing or procurement consultant, Will Moody, who is online this evening.
All right, Mr. Moody.
Good evening, Mayor.
We hear you. Go along, Mr. Moody.
I'm so sorry for that echo. Yes, uh, BidNet, and do excuse the, uh, language that was used on the form. However, that is a free service to the city. Uh, due to the population, they would let us use them to actually post bids in, in association with the Georgia Procurement Registry, and we can get additional, um, what we call hits. So, we're just not looking at the, the normal five or ten people or vendors. We're able to get a few hundred to a few thousand bidding on different projects that would be coming in the city. So, this agreement just gives us an online platform to house the event. I think you saw in the, in the package, we do have neighboring cities and counties that also use the BidNet services.
Okay, thank you so much. Counsel, did you have any questions? Councilwoman Bell?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moody, for being here. Um, this agreement is just for twelve months, correct?
It would be for the twelve, and it's just ongoing.
Okay.
And I, due to population being under fifteen thousand, we're on a free, free platform.
Okay.
So, this does help the local citizens with businesses as well try to get into this bidding fund, uh, for these different projects.
And then I have one more follow-up question, if that's okay?
Go ahead.
Oh, Mr. Moody, I see in the contract on the participating organization fees, it says any customized work request by the participating organization shall be available at one hundred and twenty-five dollars per hour. I just want to make sure I'm clear or get clarity on what is that customized work request to make sure that we don't have to pay that hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour?
Oh, that's if they build a purchasing website for us.
Oh, okay.
But they won't do in that. Once we, uh, get on board, they'll give us a link. We'll put it on the city website, and that would direct everyone to go bid free.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Any other questions? Councilman Perkins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so I had a question, and you, we kind of touched on this, the free tier, seemed like we're, we kind of step out of that tier if we get above fifteen thousand. Can you speak a little bit to sort of what the markers are for moving into the different paid tiers and how much those tiers are? What would the cost be if we move beyond that?
For now, um, being under fifteen thousand, we're free. I would need to find out, uh, the next tier. I know larger cities of twenty-five thousand, that's when they're getting charged, but I can check with them to find out, um, what the tiers are and get back with you.
Okay. Well, then, the, probably more relevant to whether or not you need to do extra work would be, are they looking at that, uh, information just with the next census, or what, with what frequency are they updating their, their account?
Off of the census. That's actually how they, uh, proposed it to me.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Hood?
Yes, I, I have several questions. Uh, what is the cost to the bidders?
There are three tiers on there. Every bidder can go in, do it for free, or they can sign up to receive state, federal, and higher bid selections, but that will solely be on them. To do local things with Clarkston, Tucker, DeKalb County, that is strictly a free portal.
And that, and so that, can you give me just a general idea of the cost to a big or small firm who wants to bid on a Clarkston contract? Uh, I, I think I saw that they would need to set up an account, but, and I'm assuming this is how this business, uh, funds itself, since it's not charging us for, for what we need.
So, what, what they will do, um, city manager was on the demos with, so, they will register for an account, so they can receive bid information from any city for free. They do not have to pay unless they want to look at federal bids.
Okay. So, they can bid, they can find out, sign up for the information, and then they can put in a bid for free. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, did you have the opportunity to check the experience of other cities with this, uh, with this, uh, service?
I, I have. Um, city of East Point is, has been on this for three years now. City of South Fulton has been on it for three. I believe Tucker has been in there four years now, and each municipality or large government really enjoys this platform. It makes a more secure situation where everything is online and it's not going directly to a person outside of procurement.
All right. And then, um, has our city attorney had the opportunity to review this contract?
Yes.
And I, I had the same question that, uh, Councilmember Bell had about the additional services, and we made it clear in here that it's if we request them.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and if, if I could just add one more comment.
Sure.
If I understand correctly, we're still gonna be putting our, uh, requests for proposals or invitations to bid on the state procurement website, which our new ordinance says we'll do, and this will be in addition to that.
Uh-huh. Okay. Thank you for that clarity. Any other questions for this item? Councilman Perkins.
I do have a follow-up question. So, when we say additional services, um, I, I've worked with, you know, I've never worked with the BidNet, but I have worked with a couple of other software platforms. And, uh, the free tier sounds great, but then to really get the functionality you need, you have to, you end up having to get the additional services. Have you all looked into any of the specifics of that? Are you pretty confident that we'll get what we need with the free tier, or has that come up with discussions with other cities?
As, um, Mr. Moody mentioned, I was on the demo that they did, and, you know, they shared with us some of the additional, uh, services that they provide. I do think that this is a good starting point for us, uh, because as we mentioned, we do do the state, um, we put our information on there, we put it on the website, but BidNet will afford us the opportunity to, um, get a bigger, uh, audience when it comes to our procurement. And right now, where we may have a small number of responders, we may be able to get a lot more. Uh, so I do think that, um, it's in the best interest of the city that we start with this, you know? Free is better than us having to pay, but yes, we may have to come back, um, if it's over that twenty-five thousand dollar amount, uh, to ask for, uh, council's consideration if we need some additional, uh, resources through BidNet.
Thank you.
Okay. Counsel, did you have any other questions? Okay, hearing none, and we didn't have anyone sign up for this item. Um, would you like for this to go on consent? Okay, this is also on consent. We'll move on to E, which is to discuss adopting an ordinance to amend Chapter 10 of the city code to establish hours for construction, demolition, and excavation activities. Ms. Cameron, come on down. And you see how excited I am about that?
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor and, and council members. Um, what we've discovered is that we have, um, a different set of construction times for different projects. And, um, that concerns me, because we don't want to be liable, um, for discrimination or unfairness, you know, unfair practices. So, I'm proposing, uh, to standardize those construction hours. I looked at our sister cities, and I looked at, um, several sister cities, and I looked at the county. And what you have before you tonight is consistent with each of those communities. So, I'm asking that you consider those, um, those hours so that we can, uh, get projects completed on time. Uh, right now, we have a couple of projects that are working nine to five office hours, and it's gonna take that, those projects forever to get done.
And can you state those hours, just so?
Yes. So, we are proposing, as everyone else, seven AM to seven PM. Um, we're proposing, um, nine to five on Saturdays, nothing on Sundays, and, uh, nothing on holidays, major holidays.
Okay. Uh, counsel, do you have any questions? Councilwoman Hood? Counselwoman Hood?
My concern is that 7:00 a.m. is awfully early in residential areas. It may not be a problem in commercial or industrial areas. So have you considered the possibility? I know it gets more cumbersome to enforce, but is there the possibility of adjusting hours in the middle when it's surrounded by residential or within a certain distance of residential? You seeing where I'm going with that?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So, so I'm bringing it before you tonight. Again, I looked at the other, you know, communities, and we can adjust, you can adjust those times. However, my recommendations, if you were to change to 7:00 a.m., is to go to 7:30 a.m. Again, I'm just looking to standardize. I think that it would afford those residential areas. We, you know, we will inform our surrounding areas about those construction hours, but I think that it would be, it would be beneficial for public safety and for public health if we were to get those projects started and get those projects ended in a timely manner.
My suggestion is we stay at 12 hours. If we want to go to 7:30 a.m., we could go to 7:30 p.m.
I agree.
Yeah.
I agree.
And then I think, was this supposed to be 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.?
Yeah.
It's forbidden.
Okay, 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 okay.
And the reason why I'm, the other, the major reason why I'm bringing this to you is because our code currently actually gives developers the option to develop from 7:00 p.m. or from p.m. to a.m., and so we want to, we want to rectify that.
Any other questions? Counselwoman Bell, did you have a question?
My mic doesn't want to come on. So I hear the discussion in regards to the 30 minutes, but City Pla- Planning Director, Lisa Cameron, can you tell me what is Tucker's hours and then what is DeKalb's?
Absolutely. The City of Tucker is 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Hold on, I have, I have all of them here. So the City of Tucker is from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on weekdays or between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. on Saturdays, and there should be no construction or demolition activities or deliveries on Sundays or New Year, Thanksgiving, you know, those major holidays.
And DeKalb?
DeKalb is, DeKalb has requirements for constructions Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Saturdays from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., nothing on major holidays.
As a result of that, I'm okay with us being consistent with our neighboring cities as well as the county because we are, I mean, we touch the county on our side, so.
I even have Pond Lake, I have City of DeKalb.
Okay, go. And then any other council member have want to voice something now? Councilman, Councilman Perkins, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cameron, on this. So one question I did have, you know, and I'm thinking particularly if, you know, a homeowner might be demaying a part, you know, room or something like that, trying to save money, just with some of the limitations of hours on weekends. If the rest of the council would consider giving them an extra hour on Saturdays, I mean, again, it would be consistent with the rest of the county. It sounds like going from eight to five. Understand having a break on Sunday, you know, I'd say if there's a time in there even as well, but I will.
Okay.
Be okay giving us one day of the week where there's nothing going on, so.
Okay. Are you proposing eight to five or eight to six on Saturday?
I'd be okay with eight to six on Saturdays, but I'd be, or I'd prefer eight to six, but I'd be okay with eight to five.
Okay.
Okay, Counsel, well, sure.
I think it makes sense to be consistent with the surrounding areas, so eight to five, seven to seven. That way, if somebody's doing different projects in areas, they'll have to think of different rules for Clarkston.
I guess my only question, is that a concern or a challenge for staff that'll be overseeing?
No, because we have, we do have two co-compliance officers now, and we do have them rotating on Saturdays.
And we have the public who will gladly call and let us know.
Yes, they will, yes, they will.
So that's never a problem with that part. So what I'm hearing is that we are trying to make sure that we stay consistent with the county.
Yes.
And our neighboring cities.
Yes.
So, at this time, Counsel, and again, what were, what were the Saturday hours?
The Saturday hours is what being, what's being proposed is from eight to five.
And that's consistent with the county?
It's definitely consistent with the county.
Okay, all right. So yes, Counselwoman Hood?
Yes. I'm less concerned about being consistent with the county than I am about the ability of our residents to have quiet in their neighborhood before early hours. So, I mean, sure, we could go with consistency, but, you know, anybody needs to understand that hours in cities can be different, and I'm perfectly fine with nine a.m. to five on Saturdays. You know, this is working people. This is a day that they have off, and I think they would appreciate not having construction noise waiting kingdom up at 8:00 a.m. Now, I, you know, it's up to the council, obviously, but I'd like for us to consider the peace of mind and ability to sleep of our residents. That's my final comment.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Johnson?
I support the consistent hours with our neighboring cities and the counties, even on Saturday.
Okay, thank you. So we're proposing to keep it consistent with our neighboring, with our overarching county.
Right.
And our neighboring cities. And so I don't think this, is this going on consent? Are we just going to have?
I'm okay with it.
Yes.
Consent?
Uh, no.
Okay. So this is not consent? We appreciate it, and again, like I said, that's why we have democracy, okay? You just stay right there because the next item is yours.
Yes, ma'am.
So we'll make sure in terms of item 6E, that is regular agenda item, and then we'll move to item 6F, which is to discuss the appointment of a new director for the Downtown Development Authority to fill the vacancy created by former Director Kristen Durant, removing her residency. And Ms. Cameron?
Yes, thank you so much, Madam Mayor. As you are aware, we had a director that actually moved out of the city, and to stay in compliance with state regulations, we are asking that you review the applicants before you and make a decision to appoint a new director so that we can start afresh next month with a candidate, get them trained, and everyone will be on the same page.
Okay. And if you go through, just to kind of let us know the names, in this position, is there a resident position, correct?
This is a resident position. It would satisfy the state requirements for a taxpayer residing citizen, so. I believe the first one, I don't know if mine is going to be the same. Do you want me to go through each applicant?
No, I think, no. Councilman Carroll?
So my question just, I think we looked at all these applicants last time, but has there been any outreach to them since then to make sure they're still interested in serving?
They have been reaching out to me to ask.
What year is Lisa's interested in doing it?
So everyone that has actually, that has, the application that's before you has reached out to see when the decision will be made.
Okay.
Including our DDA members.
Yep. Okay, Counsel, you see the names? You can just go through the names and just, don't have to go through all their criteria and stuff. Just go through the names.
Okay. The first one is Nibiyah, and he is, of course, as you can see, he's been in the city for some times. He is Ethiopian, has a very visible presence in the community, a very widespread connection, and he has, he's very, very interested in representing the community, especially the city. Grew up here, went to school here, he's a business manager here, and again, very interested. The second one is Mr. Lauren Norman. He also works for the Edwin Jarvis, which is FedEx, that's here in our community, is a resident here, is a homeowner, actually, has been here for a while. He did, he, apparently a tree fell on their home, I guess, a couple of years ago, so he said, you know, they just took their time in repairing the house. So he's here, he's back, and he's, he wants to get very involved in the community. Mr. Johnston, I believe everyone is familiar with him, very, very great background, community development. He's a, he's a developer. He, I believe, did the cottages here in the city, and my last, looking at the website, the last count that I saw was about 2,000 tours that that project have allowed in the city, has brought a lot of information and a lot of interest to the city. We have Debbie Gathman, and I believe, I thought she was going to be here tonight, but Debbie, I haven't, I haven't talked to Debbie, I guess it's been, it's been about 30 days, but it's, I think, I think she's still, she's still interested. And of course, if she's in the city, you know, that's another consideration. You have Mr. Dean Moore, who is currently, he's the chairman of the Historic Preservation Commission, that has an interest, and then also Mr. Ransom. I have not reached out to him some time ago, have not heard back, so.
He's still interested.
Okay.
Because I got the text.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much. And those are the applicants that are before you.
Okay, Counsel.
Yes?
I have one question from Ms. Cameron. So, or the individuals that applied the first time and did not get selected, did you put them in here or did the council?
Those are names you may want to consider if they are still interested. So I did reach out, and I believe Lauren, Mr. Norman is what probably one, I believe he's one of the candidates that I did reach out because, because, you know, what I've heard before, and then there were several of them that had moved out of, out of the city. They're unincorporated, so they couldn't, and then, you know, they weren't business owners, so I did reach out to those individuals.
This person doesn't have to be a business owner.
Right, right.
Just a resident.
Just a resident.
Right, right. Okay, Counsel, any nominations for this particular seat? Counselwoman Hood?
Yes, I would like to put forward Debbie Gathman. I've found her to be energetic and very much involved in many aspects of the city. Over time, she's got a different background, but I think that would be an advantage to the committee. She leans heavily toward the environment and education. I think that she would make a good addition to the DDA.
Okay, thank you. Any other nominations? Yes, Counselwoman Bell?
Yep. So I have a primary and a secondary.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, I, William Johnston, only because of the track record and being a developer and being a director of this DDA, and then Nabiyu, is that how it's been named? Just because of the extensive management experience and working with businesses within the city, so those are my two.
Okay. Any other? Councilman Perkins?
The procedural question, are you looking for a second to nominations, or how are we? I think originally the idea was each council member would get a nomination, and then I think something different was decided, so how would you prefer we go about this?
We can allow overall a nomination for that, just a nomination, if that's the preference of the council.
So you're looking to see just a common majority, and then we'll go from there? Yeah. I had the exact same one and two as Councilwoman Bell, or Councilwoman Bell, so. Will Johnson is my first choice, again, for the same reasons that Councilwoman Bell articulated, and the same reasons for Mr. Nabiyu Mes as well.
Okay. All right. Any other comments?
Development is right in name, so I think developer, it makes sense to have a developer on there. I don't know that we have another developer on the, on the, on the board right now, so.
Okay. Yes. Any other comments? Okay. So right now, number one, we have Debbie Gathman, and then in terms of number one, we also have Will. And so we'll allow those two names, and then at the next council meeting, we can vote on those at that time. Okay? Hearing none, we'll close those out, and those will be the two names that we'll vote on at the council meeting. And so, of course, that one's not consent, and thank you, Ms. Cameron. Take care. And we'll move to the last item, which is to discuss the projects list for the Georgia Department of Transportation Local Roads Assistance, LRA, grant funding application submitted in the amount of $137,335.85. Mr. Kaiser?
So before the retreat, Interim City Manager Jones and I received an email from State of Georgia, Georgia Department of Transportation, indicating that Governor Kemp had allocated X amount of funding, additional funding, with no local match to cities and counties in the state of Georgia. Clarkston's allocation is that dollar amount, Ms. Mayor, that you just mentioned. So what I did was, I went to Exhibit D, a list of the road-conditioned roads rated from two to five, that we've been talking about in the SPOSS Committee, and took the projects that were not included on LMIG 2324 and added those rated two roads, Lincoln, Lester, and also Jolly. And so that complements all of the road listed as rated two, worse than the city. So what we have on Exhibit D, which is the very last page of that sheet, is all the twos that will be funded by state funding, LMIG with a 30% local match and 100% GDOT funding. So we have all those that will be funded partially or wholly with state funding. The rest of the projects on Exhibit D, which we talked about in the SPOSS Subcommittee meeting, would eventually be funded under SPOSS II, all the ones that are rated three through five at some point in the future. So what you're voting on is basically the remaining roads rated two, those three roads, and I would submit those, as I do with the LMIG projects every year, before June 15th, upload them to the GDOT website, to their link, and wait for a decision that has to be done before June 15th. And so the form, the form that you would sign, Mayor, would be the same as you've seen before, it's just a different funding source, but no local match.
Okay, outstanding. So Councilman Carroll?
I think we already approved these roads previously, right? So we're just reaffirming it. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, you did, but you didn't know about the funding when you approved of those.
Okay.
So this just takes care of the rest of the roads rated two that you've already approved of, correct?
Okay. Any questions? All right. Hearing none, is this fine for consent agenda? Okay, outstanding. With that being said, no executive session, and we will, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move that we adjourn.
It has been properly moved and seconded that we adjourn the meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, meeting adjourned, and good night. We'll see you next week.